Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have the roll, please?
Alderman Nichols. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Sevenek. Alderman Langdon. Alderman Kruger. Alderman Tomgrotty. Alderman Tedgrotty. Alderman Repella.
The first evening item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing. It's for a special use permit by T&amp;J Capital Holdings. Director Schrader, would you like to give us a brief description?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. So on the agenda tonight is a special use permit application for T&amp;J's Capital Holding LLC to convert the former grocery store, Third Street Market, located at 403 Third Street, from a grocery store into a dental lab. The dental lab focuses on custom prosthetics as well as both handcrafted and through 3D printing. So this use does fall or classify under a light manufacturing, assembly-type use slash kind of that printing use that was previously modified within our municipal ordinance to allow this type of use within the C1 general commercial district through a special use permit. The Plan Commission did review this item earlier this month and did recommend approval of this special use permit, finding that it did meet the criteria as well as a comprehensive plan and was not detrimental to the impact of the neighborhood. So I will turn that over to you.
So at this point, if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item, we would accept your comments. Seeing no one, we'll call that public hearing to a close and we'll move on to the second public hearing, which is another special use permit from Frontier Builders on behalf of XLR8 Sports Training. Director Schrader?
Thank you, Mayor. Accelerate. So this proposed use has been in front of the Common Council over the last several months. If you can recall, 1300 Whitman Drive is a city-owned parcel. So they did propose to purchase the property earlier this summer and then had a preliminary site plan review. The Plan Commission went through a couple amendments trying to make their financing work and things of that nature. So again, this special use permit is for a recreational fitness facility land use, which is called out in our zoning district, but it's more of a training facility located within the C4 Business Park District. The Plan Commission did review this earlier this month and did recommend approval of this special use permit.
So with that, is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on that special use permit? Seeing no one, we'll call that public hearing to a close as well and we'll move on to the report of department head, staff, and consultants. Do we have a motion for the minutes and communications? Alderman Sevenek? Oops, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we approve Minutes A through F and Communications G through I.
So motion a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Director Tugge. In the park minutes, it talks about adding the shore wall to the concrete shore wall to Chiffon Park. And is that going to be done in the near future?
So within the next, I would say, two weeks or so, we should be installing about another 400 to 500 feet from where it currently is. So it gets you up to Cargus Boulevard, maybe up close to Peanut Island is where they would like to get this fall.
It's my understanding that there was some concerns brought up last year on this that along that shore wall with ducks and geese and seagulls. I have photos here. This summer I've been monitoring it and it's always full of, you wouldn't even be able to use it for health reasons for someone to fish. And I thought that was kind of a test strip that we put in last year and we were going to use some products to see if we could combat the problem of goose dropping, seagulls and ducks. And I haven't seen that, any improvement with that yet.
So it's ironic that you bring that up because about a week and a half ago, we met with a representative from the USDA for that exact reason. We had some concerns about the droppings in that area and his, he felt that the reason why you see it where you see it is because it's by the boat launch. So what the geese do at night, they come up the launch and they like to just sit right there because they're protected. And if any predator is in the area, you know, they could just get right back in the water. That was basically what he said. And he said, "I would bet that you find less droppings further down." And so we have kind of looked at that and indeed, I believe that is the case. As the further west you go, there are less droppings. So to address your point about the chemical, he did recommend a couple of products. THAAD Brown, our street and park superintendent, has purchased that and he has not put it down yet, but he does want to do that very soon. And so we get a true test of what this environmentally safe chemical can do. We're basically talking about just treating the grass area around the boat landing. That's kind of the game plan because that's obviously where the droppings problem is. So that's where we're going to do this little test.
You know, we've never had those. I mean, we have droppings in the park, but once we put in that walkway, that concrete slab along the shoreline, it's just been filled up. I mean, you couldn't even walk through there and pick your steps. It's that's full. You've seen it. And I see the same thing in Ena. And I'm out my boat three, four times a week and I take people past the Dotty Park in Ena there and it's just, it's horrific. And this is a wood walk over there and they have the same problem. It seems like when you have this shoreline with a hard surface, it seems like, you know, for some reason, they're attracted to that. And again, I thought that was a test strip last year and we were gonna... You said they had a product and, you know, it would be a full-time job for someone to keep the shoreline clean and the health problem. But it seems like, you know, where everybody else fishes with the grass and gravel, we don't have that concentration.
Well, yeah, that's a valid point and that's why we brought this representative in. I'd like to see how this product actually works. And we do want to be a little more aggressive on our cleanup of that area. We're going to sort of combine that with the chemical and see where that...
Before, before we pour 400 more?
Yeah, we're going to clean it up really good and then apply the product and then see if it helps.
Before we pour 400 more feet of concrete?
Yeah, yeah. I think the timing of that will probably work out that way.
Because I hate the, you know, we have a problem here and we add to it and then we're going to have a full-time staff person every day trying to get rid of this mess. And for the fishermen and the people that use that, the boaters, you know, this week we had Seafood Fest and there was a lot of boats tied up there. And if you have that situation, I don't know how you would manage it. So thank you for that and I would hope that we get a clear picture if this product works or not before we add the rest of the concrete to this project. And that's what the conversation was last fall. Thank you.
Alderman Grotty?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll piggyback a little bit on Alderman Taylor's. Correct me if I'm wrong though, but this shore wall is not a trail. The shore wall is being built from erosion standpoint and the wind and blah, blah, blah to keep that from fading away. So it's not technically made for a trail for people to walk and blah, blah. And I, being a member of the Parking Rec Board, I know we talked about equal friendly type of pesticides or whatever we can do. But I just want to reiterate the fact that we're doing the shore wall is because of the erosion and the effects that that has on it and not because we're doing it for a walkway and there might be seagull droppings on there. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
It is beyond your comprehension to go down there and look at that. And if we put in hundreds and hundreds of feet, then that's our city park. And the added staff we have to put in is absolutely ridiculous. And I didn't say that it was a trail. It's a shoreline. It's a shore wall. And there's been a lot of repair on the steel shore wall itself. And hey, I'm all in favor for this concrete walk, but in both cities, I haven't seen where anybody's been able to manage this. And it is a health concern and it is, we don't want our city to be known by this. It's disgusting.
Alderman Grotty?
Thank you, Mayor. I do go through the park quite a bit. It is more prevalent because you can see it on the concrete. But if you go where the armory was, that whole area is full of goose droppings. So is the bike trail. It's just not that patch of concrete. We have a problem with geese and they seem to be in congregate on that end of the park. And, oh, by the way, it was Jazz Fest, not Seafood Fest. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further comments. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item F is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this point?
Tim Jacobson, 732 Perris Street, Manassia. Yeah, it's that time of year. I'm sure everybody's got their budget, workbooks, and getting prepared for the next fiscal year. And I know the frustrations that that brings. My reason for being here is I know benefits are always a problem, wages, benefits, especially healthcare. And I'd like to ask council to be very reasonable with our employees. I remember when I was working, we were trimming benefits to compete with private industry. And today with the employment opportunities that are out there, the private industry is actually offering these benefits that we were trimming just to get started. The other thing that comes to mind is this past year, we had all our local and county and state politicians over by KC plant promoting the state to use tax dollars to help promote and benefit the private industry employees over at KC's plant. And I understand the economic implications and what it does for all the surrounding communities, but we can't come home and turn our back on our own employees. If we're going to compete with private industry trimming our benefits, we got to compete with private industry on the other side of that coin also. Because if you don't, you're going to lose your good employees and you're going to continue to lower that bar. And I know you all have your professions and they all have their hazards, but the public service is different. It's hard to explain, but it is different. And I think if you ask the people out on the streets, they'll say the same thing. It's different. They don't have their machinery, arguing with them, calling them names. When they punch out, they go home and another crew takes over. But those public employees are out there protecting and keeping our community safe and worrying about their own families as well. And I think your first responders will agree with me. It only takes a half a second. When you're worrying about your children's healthcare or your spouse's afflictions, half a second, you're past that. You're 15 feet past a stop sign in a squad car, fire truck, or a 58,000 pound snowplow truck. Not because they're not doing their jobs, but because they have so much on their mind, so much on their plate. And I'm not asking you to give up the keys to the city. I mean, we all know those were melted down to pay for the steam plant. But to be reasonable with our employees, if we take care of our people, they'll be very happy to take care of us. And you're not going to find a better bunch. I mean, I've been around with quite a few of them, even met some of the young guys and they're all pretty good people. The other thing, then the discussion about the concrete, one thing that came to my mind is that's out in the sun, that patch of concrete by the boat launch. So that's taken heat all day. There's no shade. I wonder if the geese are congregating there at night because it's warm. Maybe the thought would be to check out a darker colored concrete so it doesn't absorb the heat, it reflects it. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have nine items this evening. The minutes to approve from the Common Council Meeting on August 19th and the joint meeting as well. The Board of Public Works recommendations for a payment to Summers Construction, $90,007.78. A change order for Farron Asphalt Sealers in the amount of $1,360.22 payment to the same company for concrete pavement crack sealing for $73,639.78. The Plan Commission recommendations from August 20th for a special use permit for 1300 Whitman Drive and a special use permit for 403 Third Street. And the Personnel Committee recommendations from August 19th for the Police Department Evidence Custodian Position and the Public Works Director and Civil Engineer Positions. Are there any items that anyone would like separated this evening? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. All the items under Board of Public Works, that would be 3, 4, and 5, mainly dealing with changeovers and payments. And I also think maybe the Personnel Committee's recommendation, item 9.
Alderman Taylor?
6 and 7, please.
Any others? Seeing none, do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenek?
Basically, there's just three then. That would be the consent agenda items of being minutes, 1 and 2 of the Common Council and the Joint Common Council with the Water and Light Commission and under the Personnel Committee, the Police Department's Evidence Custodian Position.
There's a motion a second. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item 3, Alderman Kruger.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the payment to Summers Construction Company Incorporated, Contract Unit Number 2019-01, new street construction in the amount of $90,078.01, payment number 5.
So motion a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the change order for Farron Asphalt Sealers LLC, Contract Unit Number 2019-06, asphaltic concrete pavement crack sealing various city streets, subtract $1,360.22, change order number 1.
So motion a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the payment for Farron Asphalt Sealers LLC, Contract Unit Number 2019-06, asphaltic concrete pavement crack sealing various city streets in the amount of $73,639.78, payment number 1 and final.
So motion a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item number 6. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenek?
Go ahead.
Someone else? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for the approval of the special use permit as presented for 1300 Whitman Drive, parcel number 60163901.
There's a motion a second. Discussion. I don't know who you picked. So Alderman Grotty seconded. Alderman Taylor?
Director Schrader, I appreciate the description you gave of this. And for the people at home, could you tell us why the special use permit is with the C4 district compared to what it's at now?
So the C4 district is the Business Park District. So it's a little bit different than your general commercial. So again, this land use does require a special use permit. So review and approval by both Plan Commission and the council to make sure it does fit with the neighborhood and the district that it's going into.
And what big changes are there because of the special use permit? What are the changes that are being made to conform to that? For the special use permit to conform to that C4?
So the, a special use permit, the five things that they are reviewed is the use shall be compatible with the adjacent land uses. So the existing uses do not depreciate in value and will be no detrimental to development of vacant land. The use shall have an appearance that will not have an adverse effect on adjacent properties. The use shall be reasonably related to the overall needs of the city and the existing land use pattern. The use will not cause traffic hazard or congestion. And the use shall have adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities.
And you've had no objections from any other landowners in the area in this?
No. At the Plan Commission meeting, there were a couple of individuals, property owners adjacent to, just kind of making staff, the engineering crew, aware of some potential drainage issues. And Director Radomski feels that those were addressed within the site plan review process as well as the engineers of the applicant.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item 7 is a special use permit for 403 Third Street. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for the approval of the special use permit as presented to allow the dental lab facility to locate and operate out of 403 Third Street, finding that the proposed use does not have a negative impact on the comprehensive plan or the general welfare of the community.
There's a motion a second by Alderman Tomgrotty. Discussion. Alderman Taylor?
Sam, you set this memo here and could you read item 3 on your memo? For the special use permit?
The use shall be reasonably related to the overall needs of the city and to the existing land use patterns.
Yeah, and continue.
With this facility recently sitting vacant for approximately three years and continuing to depreciate in value, the city sees this as a positive operation, primarily being operated within a closed building, being clean and quiet with minimal exterior nuisance, having little noise, heat, vibration, or foul odors. The applicants have noted through the fabrication process, there can be a faint wax burning odor that may or may not be able to be detected, but in their opinion is not a foul odor.
I went out to the facility and was trying to determine the noxious odor, if it was a foul odor or not. And certainly, their current facility is in a very industrial area and so it's not in a residential neighborhood too. So currently, we have nine homes that are surrounding this property on the west, south, and east side. And I have photos here if you'd like to see them. And we have four homes on Milwaukee Street. We have three homes on Second Street to the south and one home to the east. In the cities, air doesn't move like it does out in the country, that's for sure, you know. And I went out and I gave the smell test and, yeah, it's definitely a wax odor. And I don't know by introducing that in people's homes if that would bother them or not. And I do know from being, I guess, being in the industrial, commercial districts in the city, that we have complaints at times for noxious odors, noise, light, things like that. And we do have ordinances to prevent those things from happening. And I just want to be reassured that this material that's being burned and the odor that's coming off that, when it starts to settle in people's homes, if it's something that they may or may not enjoy, okay? And somebody's home is very important, that it's a refuge, it's your castle, it's a place where you go. And with this special use permit, we're possibly introducing that. What is your feelings on enforcement if we have that problem? And we have complaints from our taxpayers?
So we do have, noxious odors does fall under public nuisance. There are abilities to review that, review that odor to confirm if it's noxious or not. And then there are certain abilities to enforce it. So prior to this meeting, I did talk with Todd Drew, our health sanitarium. And Todd has dealt with this in the past and did reference the DNR code as well as our municipal code that has some of these regulations and do give some ability, if noxious odor is confirmed, to require some sort of control measure.
Okay. I did speak to one of the owners of the company and he had pointed out that there's a large paper mill to the west of this property, at 403 Second Street. And, you know, we already have that there. Well, I said, "That's not, that was there a long time." This was a grocery store since the 1960s. And we have a special use permit that you're applying for. And with that special use permit is changing the zoning from C1 to light manufacturing. And I did ask him if they had any type of filtration system at their plant now. And he said they did not. And I said, "Would you be interested in filtering this or somehow, you know, dealing with the odor?" And he said, "Well, you know, if it doesn't cost more than $20,000." And I know a hood range for a restaurant kitchen is $40,000. So I would certainly hope that... So I would certainly hope that if this is a problem, that it can be taken care of. That's what I'm looking out for, the people that live there in the neighborhood, not just the nine homes that are around that property, but the homes that are in their backyard and their backyard. What we've had with other companies is that they've had extend their stacks up higher and higher. So the odor doesn't fall into the neighborhoods. A lot of times, it comes out of a ventilation system and then it disperses and it's heavier than the molecules in the air and it drops down into the neighborhoods and to people's homes. And it kind of collects. And being in an older neighborhood, people don't have the air filtration systems that the newer homes that are built today have. So, and a lot of them have the boilers in them, so they don't have any possibility to move the air in their home, except for opening a door, opening a window, which would be probably the only fix that they would have, or turn on a fan. But odors do collect. And they call it the Denver effect. When it goes over the side of a building or a side of a surface, it'll fall down next to that structure. And it's kind of held there and much more of a concentration level than what we're emitting out of an exhaust fan. So you had given me this as an amendment. But if complaints arise due to noxious odors from the facility and the odor can't be deemed objectional, the city will require odor control measures to be installed to minimize any nuisance. You feel that what you gave me here is that we'll be able to work with the neighborhood and work with the business to help ensure that the neighborhood homes aren't negatively affected?
So after we spoke this afternoon, I did, again, I spoke with Todd Drew, the health sanitarium. We did discuss the municipal code, the DNR code. The requirements and the regulation of that is already within the code as well as the DNR code. This is what was provided as a potential amendment was basically making sure it was upfront, reiterating it right at the source of the special use permit.
And working with the business owners so far, do you feel that they'll be open to this measure if it needs to take place?
Well, I think if it gets to that point, they will have to be.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. And I did ask were the noxious odor ordinance to be put on the agenda tonight, but it was not. So, thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, we had the public hearing today. And last month, we passed a new ordinance as far as informing the public within two hundred feet. Were, was the neighborhood informed on this public hearing? Especially the nine homes that James spoke of?
So just for clarification, that ordinance was not approved yet. There was one that went through admin and is kind of sitting on hold while Plan Commission continues to discuss where they're looking at. But the hundred feet did get sent out, so that should have hit all of those homes. I don't have the exact addresses in front of me, but again, a hundred feet from the property line with the fifty, sixty foot right of way should have-
It's pretty much everyone that James mentioned and no one has appeared this evening.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
As was stated in here, there was two homes notified. And when I said nine, Sam was rather surprised I said nine. And these are the homes that are right across the street and one adjoining to the property. So I don't believe all nine homes were properly notified.
So just for clarification, I think I noted it within the memo that two of the homes, the single-family homes, were within a residential district. The other ones were within a commercial district. So that does not mean that they weren't notified. It's just was clarifying the zoning district of those homes.
Some are rental properties, so were the owners of the property notified? Thank you. I'll stop up and get that list from you then.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please. Randy Yurstin? Oh, okay, I was gonna say maybe Yurstin registered. Okay.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item nine, is there a motion? Did I miss one? No. Alderman Grotty?
Thank you. I'll make the motion to approve the Public Works Director in the Civic Engineer Positions, the Alternative Table of Organization, changing the requirement from the Director to possess a professional engineering certification to professional engineering certification preferred, replacing the Engineering Supervisor with the Deputy Director of Engineering and create of the position of Civil Engineer.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenek?
I just, the reason I wanted this was so that there is record in our minutes in the future, so people can understand why this took place. That's why I wanted Ted to make the motion. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate all that everyone does and continues to do to serve this community. My concerns with this have to do with the process by which it happened. And I questioned if, I questioned if this change is in the best long-term interests of the community. And when I speak of the change, I'm referring to the Table of Organization change. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call seven one.
Alderman Sevenek? Seven one, yes.
Yes.
Moving on to the next item. Action items for the appointment of the Public Works Director. Before I make the recommended appointment, I want to thank the Mayor, Ted Grotty, the Chair of the Personnel Committee, Steve Kruger, the Chair of the Board of Public Works for their time in interviewing the individuals and bring a recommendation to the common council. At this time, their recommendation is Adam Alex. And I couldn't agree more. Thank you.
Would you want to make the motion as well?
That is my motion.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor for the appointment of Public Works Director being Adam Alex. And I don't know who the second was. Alderman Kruger?
I don't know if you wanted his name in there.
It should have his name in there someplace. There we go. Perfect.
And it was Alderman Sevenek and Kruger?
Yes. Is there a discussion? Should have asked. Alderman Sevenek?
With this appointment, we are certainly gonna miss you, Josh. Josh is our current Public Works Director. And I have to say, I believe you did an outstanding job for our community. How you were able to step in so quickly and learn where Garfield Street was or, you know, any of those streets, I was very impressed with. Sure, we've had our disagreements, you know, small things. But the, is it New Berlin you're going to? They're gonna be lucky to have you. Thank you for your service.
Alderman Taylor?
I just want to say about Adam Alex that Adam has worked his way up through the system. And it probably hasn't been a department in the city that has had more change in the last twenty years than this department. And they constantly adapt to technology. They constantly adapt to, as far as staffing issues. And he's been part of this system under the leadership of Mark Redkey and Tim Jacobson. And he's just done an outstanding job. And I couldn't be happier for him or for the city to have more of a qualified candidate than this and changing the structure. Yeah, we will adapt to that, but this benefits the city of Manasha tremendously with this appointment.
Alderman Grotty?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, too, I'd just like to say, it's nice to be able to promote individuals within our own departments instead of always going out and getting the director. And some of these guys have really done one of the better things for Manasha's, our Public Works Department. They always come under budget. They're under a lot of stress. They do a lot of work as, you know, gentlemen from the audience elaborate on some of that stuff. So I just think it's good to promote within and shows a good camaraderie within the city of Manasha. And we're gonna miss you, Josh.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to add, during the process, we did have two very good qualified people that did apply for the position. They're both friends, so they both actually stated to each other whoever wins or gets the position, you know, it's great with them. So we shouldn't see any negative graffiti about the council anywhere in the city because someone didn't get the position. But again, I want to reiterate, Josh, congratulations on your movement closer back home. And I hope you and your family do well and your twins grow up really happy in that city.
Okay, seeing no, seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item two is accounts payable and payroll for August twenty-second through twenty-ninth. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for the approval of the accounts payable and payroll for the term of August twenty-second to August twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of one million, seven hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred sixty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Grotty. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item three is the beverage operators license applications for two thousand nineteen through twenty-one. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for the approval of the beverage operators license applications for the two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-one licensing period as listed under approved in the city clerk's memo dated August twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Tom Grotty. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item four is the development agreement for the dental lab at four oh three Third Street. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the development agreement with the dental lab at four oh three Third Street.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Sevenek. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll- Oh, it's not working? Oh, okay.
Yes, I was.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a conversation with Sam this morning about this while I was on the road. And I'm having some issues with the whole idea of a development agreement. Because development agreements usually have a performance where the property ends up increasing in some sort of value and there's a benefit that way in taxes. And the way I have read this, unless I'm reading it wrong, is they're gonna get a performance for keeping, because right now, the property, if my understanding is valued at one point one million, is that correct?
Yeah, just over one point one million.
And so the performance is for them to not let the value drop below the current value, the way I read this, because they have to keep it at one point one million and not less than forty employees. And that's, and as long as they do that, they get their performance, correct?
Without elaborating, yes.
Is there, how many employees are there right now?
I believe there's currently sixty-five jobs employed with the company.
Well, sixty-five jobs is good. They're not high-level paying jobs, but they're still jobs. But my issue isn't with the company moving in. My issue is with having the development agreement that doesn't develop anything. There's no development, there's no increase in tax base. They can actually lose a third of their employees and still get the incentives. I'm just not seeing where the benefit is on the city's part for this, if you understand what I'm trying to say. Because every developer agreement that's ever come across, like the original one with the grocery store, it was a three hundred thousand dollar building, developed it in one point seven, which they had to keep it at that to get their incentives. But have someone come in and say, all you have to do is keep it at the same exact evaluation and you get an incentive, to me is, there's no performance there and it's not a development. I'm really having a hard time with this. I don't think I'll be, I'm not gonna be voting for this guy, because I'm not understanding how this is actually a development agreement. Has anybody else in the city had this type of agreement where they get incentive payments for not increasing the tax base? Do we have anything that was set up that way?
Not to my knowledge, again, but perhaps, once you complete it, I can give more of a background of the grocery store development and things of that nature. I think that is one that, with the grocery store failing within one year, under two years, for sure, puts a lot of stress on the city within that TIF district, within the general public, the neighborhood, having a vacant building. The longer that building sits vacant, the more deteriorated it's gonna become, the more that value is going to depreciate right back down to that three hundred thousand. So again, the term used is performance incentive, because that is a standard, basic development agreement term for that incentive payment. But what we are looking at doing here is stabilizing the neighborhood, stabilizing our TIF district, stabilizing Manasha's tax rate, not only for the life of the TIF, but hopefully, this business is an operational and becomes a part of our community for the next fifty, sixty, hundred years. And continues to, again, bring a source of economy to that neighborhood. You know, sixty-five employees, yes, well, a lot of those may already be employed by the company. There certainly will be some turnover. Those jobs will certainly be available for any Manasha residents within the area. We have, you know, sixty-five new people coming to downtown Manasha to eat at our restaurants, to purchase food at our grocery stores, to purchase gas at our, Manasha's gas station, and hopefully, to want to live and work and play in Manasha. So again, the benefits of this, while it is difficult to comprehend, because it isn't much of a performance, because the performance was already done. The building renovations, all those sort of things were already done. So again, like you stated, the original property was assessed at three hundred five thousand before the development agreement with the grocery store. Following that grocery store, that assessed value went up to one point seven million. We quickly saw that one point seven million turn into one point two million this last year, even with the reevaluation, dropped down even further, just above one point one million. And we continue to see that decline. I want to say the building is, was for sale for, again, maybe one and a half million, and then has fallen below a million in recent- and then has fallen below, uh, a million in, in recent, um, uh, in the recent past months to, again, because they can't find that, that, uh, individual to take on, take on that building. So again, I, I think we found a, a, a great use, uh, for that building. And again, uh, potential long-term use to stabilize that neighborhood, that tax district and the, the general welfare of the, of the city. So once that, once that district closes in two thousand thirty-three, the objective is that that tax rate, that value is going to stay up there. And, and we're going to see those benefits following the closure of that tax district. That at that time, all of those taxes are, uh, being distributed through all of the taxing jurisdictions. But again, uh, turning a, a three hundred thousand dollar property still into a, a minimum value of one point one, that's not to say that it won't be higher than one point one. Again, anytime we, we put in developer obligations, we, we do want to cushion those, give them some conserva- conservation, because if we do them too tight to exactly what they are, um, we're just gonna end up right back here doing amendments. And, and that's, um, often cases what we, we, we don't want to do. So we do provide a, a slight cushion there.
But you don't think it would have been unreasonable to say, okay, for the incentive, just to raise the value a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand to one point three million, instead of keeping it exactly what it's assessed at right now? And to have some sort of increment in value increase?
So the, and I believe I'm, I'm not overstating here, but, uh, as a, um, well, can I ask, what was, what was the? Okay, so. So, uh, again, I, I didn't want to overstate, because I, I'm not exactly sure what the final listing price was. But I believe the, the sale price, uh, or the accepted sale price, the accepted offer was under nine hundred thousand. So that one point one million dollars, right after it, it sells, can be dropped drastically, um, down to a similar value of that sale price, because sale price is the, the ultimate, um, assessed record of, of what a property should be assessed at. Am I correct in speaking of that, Director? Very close. It's, it's a, it's a large portion of what that property should be assessed at. Uh, so again, while it is assessed at one point one, that's, that's assessors looking at comparable sale prices. But once you actually get a sale price, that is going to drop that. So with the one point one million, we are taking kind of into account of trying to make sure it stays there, make sure it does get built back up, because otherwise we are looking at it, at a decrease.
The other thing that you didn't mention, Director Schrader, is one of the obligations of the developer is to make a minimum investment of two hundred thousand dollars into the building. And I believe some of that's equipment and some of it is, um, investment in the building itself. But they are going to be putting some significant upgrades into that building as well.
Okay, I, I, I'm just saving a hard time with this. I, I don't know, maybe because it's something that's never come across before, you know, that this is, it just isn't a developer agreement, you know, in my eyes, it's, uh, it's just not a developer agreement. There's no incentive to increase the value higher than what the actual assessed value is right now. Technically, they wanted to cut their workforce by thirty percent or whatever it is, from sixty-five to forty, they still get the incentives. Uh, I, I think I'll be voting against this, because I'm just not comfortable with this. Thank you.
Alderman Repel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions about, um, what's the average pay rate for the workers at, uh, uh, the business? Do you guys know? Sure, that'd be great.
Do, do we have unanimous consent to hear from the owners?
Sure, we do.
So if I could just have you, please.
Oh, can I have?
If I could have you.
No, no, I'm not.
Could I, could I have you come up to the mic, go please?
I'm sorry, thank you.
Tim Bertram from, uh, eight eighty Baby Road in Nina, but, uh, also the co-owner of the dental lab. And to answer your questions, our average rate is eighteen dollars an hour currently. Uh, for hourly employees, we have quite a few salary people that are significantly higher than that, um, that have been with the company twenty-five plus years, so.
And where do most of the workers reside? They just live in the valley or anything special?
Ninety-five percent in the valley, you know, Kekana, Little Shute, Appleton, Manasha.
All right.
Yeah.
So nothing, okay, understood. Okay, so the pay rate, and you mentioned that there, what's the edu- uh, relative education level of the employees that you have?
Uh, we have some college, more high school level. As a majority. A lot of what we do is a trained, skilled labor. Uh, we take a lot of people in that have no experience and we train them from zero, because we're very specialized in working with other dental labs. So it's definitely a learned skill.
Okay, um, thank you. Do you have, uh, what's the rate of turnover for your employees?
It's a tough question to answer, but we, we don't have a lot of turnover. We have a lot of long, long time people.
Okay. All right, uh, thank you very much.
Sure. Oh, yes. Sorry, are you finished, Randy?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
I heard the, the term sixty-five full-time employees thrown around, is that correct?
That's correct.
Sixty-five?
Full-time, full-time, yeah. We have more part-timers, but we tried to give, um, and working with Sam and Don, the, uh, the full-time number.
Yeah, part-time?
Eight to ten.
Thank you.
Alderman Sevnik?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to kind of maybe, uh, talk a little bit with Alderman Krueger here. I don't want to wait five years, ten years from now to make this a development agreement or looking for a developer when it drops down to three hundred thousand, when we have an opportunity to have a signed agreement here where they're going to, um, get incentives, but the property has to stay at one point one million. And that doesn't include personal property either. And that's, um, the equipment. This is gonna be a heavy equipment building. So that also is additional tax dollars that will, um, be put into this. I think we need to be partners more in this community with our businesses. And what I mean by that is I see that when this group comes to Manasha, they're gonna be a part of Manasha and they're gonna invest, not just in their business, but in our community. And I think that's important. And to give you an example, Faith Technology took a chance on Manasha. And they built their facility, they, they rented their facility over here and they grew. And that's what I expect from this company. I think they're gonna grow. And when they grew, what did we end up getting? We got an eight-story building downtown, because they grew and they became partners with Manasha. And that's what I envisioned for this company. So I'm hoping that this is what will happen. I'd rather that it not go to a nonprofit, because then we see nothing. And that is the alternative here. It's my understanding that there is a church interested in this property. I would rather see sixty-five plus employees, uh, coming to our community and, um, spending their dollars here. So I really think it's important that we embrace this. I think it's not perfect. It's not a perfect agreement. But I think we should be thankful we have something like this coming here in the city of Manasha. And I would cur- encourage all my colleagues to vote for this, because I think we want to show that we're gonna be partners in this new venture here in Manasha.
Thank you, Mayor. So, uh, question for Sam. Director Sam? I guess I'm having a hard time with what I'm gonna ask you, the question I'm gonna ask you. The value of my home went up thousands. And, and the value of most, I'm gonna say, well, most of the homes in the, in the city of Manasha, the value went way up. So when it was a grocery store, they made it, they ve- they made it to the value of one point seven million. And I'm wondering how it dropped so low to one point one million or one point two million in a short period of time? And you're saying that if it sits there a little bit any longer, it's gonna drop below that. I'm having a hard time understanding how a building like that can drop and the homes in Manasha can go up, way up.
He defers to the right. Nancy, look out, you might be next. On the reassessment that just recently happened, on the residential, the average residential went up roughly about fourteen, fifteen percent on the residential. Now, on the residential, remember that the full market value was increased roughly about two to three percent each year for the last three or four years, whereas the assessment values did not change. If a person did not take out a new permit and didn't do anything with their home, the assessed valuation did not change over the last number of years, since the last time it was revalued. On, um, so what happened now with the reassessment for residential, we brought all, or the assessors had brought up the valuation to where the farm market value is over the last number of years, that the value had not been changed. It was elevated upward to more, which you would get on the market now for as a full market real sale. Commercial properties are a little bit different. They look at property by property, just to see once, we know what they're useful, what the use is of the property, I believe, to determine evaluation on this. And if the property is staying vacant for a number of years, it is actually probably de- depreciating, especially if the use of it is, you know, if there's no upkeep or maintenance or anything being done on it for a number of years. So that would be taken into reflection of what property valuation our assessors would have probably placed on this. And they would also look at some of the other properties in the district and, um, that part of the city, just to see once, what are the other values doing, or have there been some commercial sales that maybe had occurred, um, in the last couple of years to de-justify a reduction in the valuation? So there probably are some reasons, we didn't purposely ask the question of our assessors, but that's something we can find out the information on, to find out why did this one go down, whereas the residential are going up. The residential, I can talk, I, I know I've seen the data on it last couple of years. Commercial, it's more of a property by property basis, especially if it stays vacant for a number of years. So there are probably reasons that they felt that now that it's been sitting for a number of years, there's still been no maintenance, no upkeep, no anything on the, done on the property. Obviously, now they felt that the full market value to sell the property is not one point seven today, as it maybe had been when it was last reassessed a few years ago.
And what's the value at right now, right now, tonight?
So the value, uh, as it's currently assessed is, uh, one million, I think, one hundred forty-seven thousand.
And, and you're, you approved the sale for eight hundred and sixty thousand?
I do not approve land sales.
Who, who approved that?
That is a private party transaction between the current property owner and any offer that comes in.
Okay, so it would be.
Similar to you selling your house and somebody else purchasing your house, the city does not get involved in that. Oftentimes, the city has no idea that sale's even happening. With larger commercial properties that cost a lot more upfront, um, there's a lot more risk. Uh, again, we, we had kind of talked to the owners of the dental lab, um, about their concerns. They, you know, they're, they're over doubling, uh, the size of their existing facility. They're, they're taking on additional debt, um, you know, taking on that risk that their business, there is gonna grow. They're gonna take on more, uh, customers, things of that nature. So oftentimes, that's where, you know, you see, do see these development agreements as well, uh, to basically try and, try and alleviate some of that risk, so that company can re-establish, um, work to grow additional customers. And then, uh, again, uh, with a nine-year, uh, left in the expenditure period, hopefully at that time, that company is well-established and can continue to, to grow for years to come, um, and be a part of the community.
Okay, um, so the, uh, dental lab people saying you're gonna put in two hundred thousand dollars, three hundred?
Three to four hundred thousand dollars.
Three to, three to four hundred. Okay. Right, 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 right. Okay, so, um, this, uh, development agreement, um, for the constituents of the city, Sam, they're not going to be impacted, um, by this any, any way, um, like throwing in money, you, like, I asked you, I called, when we talked earlier.
So again, the, the basis beyond the TIF district and the development agreement is that once you establish a TIF district, that, that base tax value is, uh, is basically frozen. So that three hundred five thousand dollars is what the city collects annually, or taxes annually on, uh, to go into our general fund. So the increase in increment, so from the three hundred thousand to the one point one million, so that eight hundred thousand dollars of additional increment, all the taxes on that go back to the city, into that, that district fund, to provide incentives, infrastructure, whatever that may be, back into that district, to re-establish it, to, um, to re-stabilize the district, to, um, add health to that neighborhoods, um, things of that nature. So once it comes time to close, um, that value is elevated and all taxing jurisdictions, the school district, the city, are, are collecting additional revenues, um, on, on the greater assessed value. So again, the, the development agreement or the performance incentive is based upon the seventy-five percent of the new taxes generated above the base. So again, that's value just going into the district fund to spend, respend on the district itself to add to the health. And again, like Alderman Sevnik had said, uh, you know, should a nonprofit purchase that property, even within a TIF district, that would actually negatively impact the city and the projected revenue, uh, for that next, um, uh, fourteen years that the life of the TIF district is open, which could, uh, very greatly impact, um, our budgeting.
So, um, yeah, going back to that, um, so as a city, what they did is they contact that person and it would be the same thing as the church, they would contact that person and they don't come to the city, we don't, um, so we couldn't stop it if it was a, if, if a nonprofit wanted to come in and, 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 and get it, correct?
Uh, yeah, so, um, so this development agreement, uh, was drafted in a way that, uh, and it was noted within the staff memo and we since have had conversations with the owner that they are acceptable of the provisions. But basically, there is an additional provision in here that the buyer will agree to place a deed restriction that they shall not sell to a nonprofit for the life of the TIF district. So what that means is, at least through the life of that TIF district, we are going to be whole. So even if they're, they fall lower than their mark, uh, let's say, uh, they, they're assessed at nine hundred thousand, because they're not doing as well as we anticipated within this development agreement and we're not paying them a performance incentive and they want to sell, they still can't sell to a nonprofit for the life of this TIF district. So again, we, we did also use this as an added protection, uh, to the city, to the health of that district, um, moving forward for years.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Grady? Alderman Grady did get to speak yet.
Thank you, okay. Let me just reiterate a little bit with Alderman Krueger says, I totally understand where he's coming from on the investment type clause, but I also totally understand that this building has been less vacant for three years and we're bringing in sixty-plus employees to the area. I think it's, with the eight hundred some thousand dollars that you did write your offer and, and willing to commit another three hundred thousand in, in investment property and equipment, so you're up to the one point one. I guess it's good, it's good for Manasha, it's good, we gotta start filling these businesses. We gotta, we got a lot of, there's empty buildings, we found somebody that wants to come to Manasha, start a business and prosper and grow and develop in the community and, and I applaud you for. for that. I guess I have a question for Sam, it's just, I'm a numbers guy, so I just got a little thing here, on your, on your summary proposal on your memorandum, I don't know if these are typos or whatever, but you said they're gonna invest a minimum of 200,000 into the building by March 31, 2019, is that 2020? And also, the next line underneath there.
They have a time machine.
Just so that's not written in the contract.
Can you guys not meet that? The correct dates are in the development agreement.
Oh, it is, it is there, and the one below there says April 30 of 2019, but I'm...
If we could only go back.
2020, okay.
That's all I had, thank you.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple more questions for the gentleman with the dental lab. First question, how long have you guys been in NINA?
Excuse me, we've been in business since 1976, and NINA, I'm gonna say approximately 30 years.
Okay, all right. Number of customers, what do you guys do? I know, I gotta say this word, so I...
Sure.
Oral prosthetics.
Oral prosthetics.
Oral prosthetics, got that. So, what do you guys do?
We specialize in working for other dental labs, so we're a wholesale dental lab, meaning, somebody comes in to their dentist, they want a partial denture, that goes out to a dental lab, a retail dental lab, they don't want to make or do what we do, it's very specialized, they outsource to us. So we make a metal partial denture, that's what we do. We have, this, as of this month, the numbers I just got today, we had 468 accounts, we ship to every state in the US. We do metal 3D printing, we do casting. So the metal 3D printing, as far as I know, nobody in this state does this level of technology. We do all CAD design work to do this 3D printing. Is there anything else on the business?
How many shifts do you have?
We have, the majority of our team members are on the first shift.
Okay.
I'd say 20% on second, and the rest on third.
Okay.
So a very small third shift.
Gotcha. All right, so the number of customers, how long you been in NINA? All right, thank you, you're done, thank you. Couple questions for Sam. Sam, so we did not have that agreement with, with the grocery store, that they could not sell it to a nonprofit?
So the, the language within the development agreement did state that they, I believe, cannot become tax exempt or sell to a nonprofit. However, once the grocery store closed, the, that development agreement went away.
That's kind of dumb.
There is no more development agreement, so again, you learn from your mistakes, so this development agreement, we did talk with the owners of the company to actually place that on their deed. So that will foresee the life of the TIF district, and it will be written directly within their deed that it shall be nonprofit or pay a pilot should they sell to a nonprofit. Obviously, once 2033 hits and that TIF district is closed, that deed restriction would go away at that time.
So they couldn't sell to a nonprofit until 2033 if they choose to?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you with that. I am done, thank you.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to continue with the conversation with Alderman Sevigny that started about 20 minutes ago, but the, I agree, the city needs to be business-friendly, but again, my issue has to do with having a development agreement with, uh, performance incentives with no performance. I mean, it's, it's being paid to hold the status quo. It's worth 1.1, and you know, forget at the moment they'd have bought it for less, but it's valued at 1.1, and the agreement says it stays at 1.1. I would not have an issue with this whatsoever if it was to increase the value of it something, 100,000, 200,000, that would be a developer agreement, and that would be a, a performance incentive, but it's, it, it, it's not, it's, it's holding the status quo, there's, there's no incentive to increase the value at all. It could stay at 1.1 million till nine, till, uh, when, when this expires in nine years or, or so, and in the end, it, it didn't increase anything for a development agreement. I would like to ask, I take, you guys lease your property right now?
That's correct.
Correct, okay, all right. Again, I wouldn't even have an issue, I would not have an issue with this at all if there was actually some sort of performance within, within the agreement. I, I can't support it if there's not a performance. And my second question is, with this turning over to a manufacturing, who does the assessments on that, because I believe it's the state, correct?
The state does do manufacturing, and I guess the question is, will the state consider this a purely manufacturing property?
Correct.
If so, then the state would be doing the assessment for this property. If this would be more looked at, more of a commercial type, which has some function in it, that may not be considered eligible, because we have had a few in the last couple of years I've been here that have flipped, have flipped from off of manufacturing back to commercial. So there have been a few things that have flipped around based on the state's terminology and their, the way they looked at properties. So, but if the state does consider this as a totally pure manufacturing process, then they would end up doing the assessment for it. If not, then it would be done by our local assessors.
And at what point in time would you find that out, whether or not the state will be doing new assessments on it? Because I know, the, the manufacturing assessments have been going down quite a bit throughout the whole state.
I guess I'm not good at reading lips, what are you guys?
I was just gonna, I want to make clear that...
Could you come up to the mic, otherwise, we're recording it, and then it just, we hear your lips.
Andy Esler, Esler Commercial, N1445, High Green Court. Just want to make sure it's understood that the TIF incentive that is, was in place is going down proportionately based on value. So it was at the 1.7 million, and Sam, you know more of what I'm getting at, so you can explain a little better, but I just want to make sure that that's understood throughout. So, I mean, if the TIF incentive, if, if the agreement that was set up initially, if they close their business, sell their building, that's gone. So then it goes based on the current value of the building and whatever that purchase price is. So I guess it's, it's kind of, you're, you're arguing two different points, and I understand what you're saying of holding the value, but what we're saying is, we're purchasing, purchasing the building at X, we're actually improving upon the purchase price to get up to a higher value, we just don't want the price to go up then further, and we're, we're taking the TIF incentive and we're proportioning it based on the value. So we're going down from what it was based on 1.7 to 1.1 in that percentage, and you can explain that further, but I just want to make sure that's on the...
I fully understand all that.
Oh, you do, okay. I just want to make sure everybody does.
My point is, is it, it's valued at 1.1 right now, that's the assessed value, period. That's what the taxes are paid on is 1.1.
Sure.
The development agreement is that you have to keep it at 1.1. There's no increase, there's no increase in value from the 1.1 that currently, currently is assessed at right now. And that, that's my issue, that's my, that's what, that's my main issue.
But if they sold it to the church, that development agreement would be canceled, and it would be a nonprofit, is that correct?
Zero.
That's, that's all we're getting at, is that agreement is, if it were set in place the way our agreement is set in place, where they have those contingencies changed, then that would be true, but because it isn't, they can, the owners of the building can sell the building and that agreement can be canceled.
Let me ask you this then, i- if you bought the building for 860,000, or 860,000, you're gonna stick 300,000, 400,000 more into it, what, what was the reason for, instead of just moving here because you needed the space for the business, why are you asking for a developer agreement with a $150,000 incentive?
Well, part of the incentive to move in that building is because that incentive was already in place. So the building works, but we still have to put $300,000 into it. So there are other buildings that are traditionally more industrial that could work for this, however, this use is different, and I'm not, I don't want to speak on behalf of the business owner, I'm the real estate, you know, I technically am sub-agent of the seller, but I know that, you know, he's a good friend of mine, and I know his business very well, and so the business fits there, but it still has to be altered. So in a traditional manufacturing building, they would need to put a lot of offices and improvements, they're gonna have, they have $2 million printers within that, that takes power and things like that. So the incentive was a huge draw to come to the city of Manasha, because that's not ideally where they would want to be. So the, the TIF incentive was, you know, part of the negotiation, so it all starts from the beginning there, understanding what we're trying to work with, talking to Sam, meeting with the city of Manash, and trying to put that together. So that's, that's a big reason why we're here today. It wouldn't just be, just because that building is ideal, because it's not. In commercial real estate, you know, you have to look at the numbers, just like the city has to look at their numbers, you have to look at the numbers and say, does this building fit, and at what amount does it fit at? And that's how that, that's how it came about.
Hey, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Sam, with the $200,000 to $300,000 investment minimum, does that, does that include signage, landscaping, outdoor storage, and stuff like that?
I believe when we had talked, it was 200 to 300,000, and that was estimated building improvements, correct? But, and then tonight, they had stated 300 to 400,000.
Yeah, we, we are planning, and have agreed to, as far as the landscaping, to bring that up to the agreement previously, that's not a problem. The signage, yeah, we're definitely gonna do some signage, exterior signage, invest in that.
And I noticed at your facility now, you have tremendous amount of outdoor storage pallets and everything like that, and...
Yep, and Sam was very diligent about following up on that, because as stated, we're running out of space, all that interior, excuse me, exterior storage is gonna be brought inside, we're gonna have enough space to bring that all internally, or at worst-case scenario, behind the fencing that's already existing.
Yep, and that's what that was spec'd for, the grocery store had the pallets too. What about trucking, how many deliveries, do you have semis coming?
We have semis, I'm gonna estimate two to, two to three a month at the most.
Okay, thank you. Sam, with that signage change, does that still fit the C1 district signing, even though we're changing this to light manufacturing?
So the property is still zone C1, general commercial, it's just a, the special use allowed the light manufacturing as, as a use, yes.
Everything else, it's the end of the C1.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alderman Sevigny?
We received this document from Manasha Utilities about utilities, and that was a big reason why they wanted to come to Manasha too. They use a lot of energy, and this shows, come to Manasha, you'll save between 15 and 20% on your energy costs. This is a company that can tell other companies about that, and I just see this being like the first domino. So we, we need to let the world know that if you do business in Manasha, you're gonna save some dollars, especially if you're using energy. So I just wanted to make, you know, make us aware of that.
Alderman Langton?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one last thing, I, I forgot the gentleman's name, the Realtor.
Andy Esler.
Andy, could you come to the mic, please? I have just one question for you. So you're the Realtor, or you're in the Realtor business, do you honestly, you can honestly say that this is a fair deal for the city of Manasha?
Definitely.
Okay.
I mean, I, if, if you look at where the building is at, and how long it's been on the market, all the price drops, the utilities that are being used, if you look at it from a holistic standpoint, I without question think it's a fair view, a fair deal, and it's very beneficial for all parties.
All righty, thank you.
That's my thought, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to mention, I, I, I do ride with Alderman Kruger about the development agreement, but what scares the, the living you-know-what out of me is, is the potential of a nonprofit, because I think, you know, Paul could, I think he's getting Nancy and wants to get rid of it, so that scares me a lot. So with that, I will be voting for it, so thank you.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna say the same exact thing, the whole thing with the nonprofit and losing the tax base that way, and I take it, Sam, in all honesty, with, there has been a nonprofit that had interest in it, as far as you know? As the way the discussion has gone, it sounded like it was a definite...
Myself and our planner have, I think, had, earlier this spring, had two conversations with two separate nonprofits that were looking at the facility.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion at this point, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Item J is held over business, is ordinance 12. Not sure what, where we want to go with this at this point. Alderman Nichols?
Question?
Sure.
There was a motion made at the last meeting, does that...
Oh.
...remain on the table, or do we need a new motion?
The city attorney has reminded me that there is apparently a motion on the table, and that would come back to the board in the same way, so...
Thank you.
I just wanted to see what the motion was here.
I postponed it to the next game.
I just wanted to see, make sure I knew what the motion was here, so I could read it back to everyone. So there was a motion by Alderman Nichols and seconded by Alderman Kruger to approve ordinance 1219, an ordinance amending Title 13 by making certain changes to the district at 528 Milwaukee Street, parcel 10039600, and that was introduced by Alderman Nichols and recommended by the plan commission. So right now, that motion is still on the floor because it was postponed, and we could take discussion at this point, or we could take action, depending on what your pleasure is. Is there any discussion? No? If there's no discussion, then we would take a roll call vote on that, please. The, the motion that's on the floor is to approve the ordinance which changes the zoning. Ordinance, I guess item K is ordinance 21. Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve O-21-19, an ordinance amending Title 9, Chapter 6 of the Code of Ordinances, municipal stormwater utility, introduced by myself.
Here's a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
I'm sorry.
I didn't know if it stuck or not.
No.
Okay.
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Item N is public comments on any matter that was listed on the agenda. If anyone would like to speak on any of the items that we spoke about tonight, you're welcome at this point.
Now I'm really confused. I don't know just what went on here. I, I don't know whether, when I can speak, when I can't, it's very confusing, and I know that Barb's confused, and I know that the attorney is now confused. But with that said, there's been a lot of discussion through this, obviously, and I wrote some notes here from the last, from the last meeting, and there's been a lot of discussion, and I, just to make this quicker than what I've written down here, I'm just gonna go straight to the point. Which means, there's been so many accusations, false accusations, that were being made throughout this whole two and a half, three months. Nobody has come to the conclusion that this is a process. We bought a piece of property which we were encroached on, we were encroached on the railroad property by two feet. The owner, who is represented by Dan Hewer, put in a request to buy, put in... to buy, put in, through me, to buy some land from the railroad. We have done that, which changes the lot lines. Okay? When the lot, and Sam, you can quote me if I'm wrong. When you change lot lines, you automatically get pushed into this process which ignites a CSM, correct? Because you're now changing the lot lines of that property. Then we argued throughout this that Judy's name, the estate, the head of the estate was brought in. For one, I don't understand that. Why, why was she even brought in? Why was her name even being brought up? Because if this is a process that as soon as you change lot lines and the process that Manasha has been, that put us into this, ignited a CSM through a survey, the survey was done, puts us in the process. The process then comes to you and you say, we're changing the lot lines. So now you're non-conforming to where we are today, which is heavy industrial. Then after last meeting, you went and you called Judy on the phone along with her attorney. My one question is, why wouldn't she have done that three months ago? I think this whole thing could have been resolved. You would have known exactly where she was coming from. You would have known exactly where we were coming from. You would have known everything and this whole thing could have been done. We've had conversations between what I may have want, may want to do with this property that's next to us. Then all of a sudden you're saying that we, that the county made a mistake in basically chopping that lot in half. And Stan asked, well, if we have a clear title, how can that be a mistake? You said, you quoted, well, the city attorney is gonna have to go ahead and get and make an argument with that. Has that been done?
This is your point to speak your mind.
That was just a question.
Yes.
I doubt that has been done. And my question is why? Which in turn, what are we approving? Are we approving the sixty by seventy-five? What are we voting on? Sixty by seventy-five? Are we voting on the whole lot which is sixty by one fifty-five? Or sixty by seventy-two because we cut it in half? We didn't. The county did. So I'm totally confused. So then we, this gets pushed back, thanks to Stan. I appreciate it. Because everybody was under this misunderstanding. Randy says, well, maybe we should have the owner here to hear from her. Why? Why didn't somebody stand up and say, this is where the process goes? It has nothing to do with what she wants. And you knew darn well that she did not get into the zoning part or the rezoning part of all this. She didn't. We were just trying to get the lot lines changed to get out of the encroachment. I told you before our last meeting, I came to you and I says, we are, I found out that we are titled. So this question is now, now in void. But yet, no one says nothing. We get voted down the first time, it gets hashed whomever talked about this. You tried to call me. I didn't call you back because I figured whatever you discuss between her attorney, her attorney and her, maybe you have a better understanding on where we at now. Discussion? I hear nothing. What's going on here? I mean, do I have to sit here and, how can I prove to these people, to, to the board here, that what I'm saying is not wrong? It's not lies? It's, it's not made up? This is the way it is. And now, everybody, everybody thinks that the owner of this property wants this rezoning. I'm thinking. And I think if we had to take a vote, I think that's, I, I doubt very much that that's, that's what was intended. And you can quote me if I'm wrong. I mean, I don't know. If that's the way it sits, then I wanna change everything and I'll leave everything the same. Along with a discussion was between me and him, I wanna change my zoning. I wanna change it from heavy industrial. And I wanna move to regular industrial. How to do that? I have no idea. Word got out that I may want to put up storage units in this lot next to us. I'm buying extra lot, doing the whole thing. That somehow got out and I was told I wasn't telling the whole truth. Well, I can't tell the truth because I don't have the financing right now. I don't have what the bank wants because this is all happening for three months. I'm trying to build a garage and I can't. So I want it to be put into the minutes that I wanna change my rezoning or change my zoning to light industrial. I wanna build storage units. I will follow all the rules of setbacks. If I have to go at seventy-five percent of recycled material, so be it. But that's what I'm doing. That's my request. I have it put in the minutes just so something is not changed the next time I come up here. And now there's another ordinance saying that now regular industrial can't do that either. That's why I'm up here to say it's put in the minutes. With that said, I just think it's very weird how some of these things get thrown out for people to hear when they're not hearing the truth or the whole truth. And then these guys have to go ahead and vote. That is so wrong.
Seeing no one else?
Well, you have to ask if anybody else.
Well, anyone else? See anyone else? Is there a motion to recess at this time?
Are we going to recess first?
Yes. Yeah, because we wanna have a closed session there. All those in favor?
Aye.
We stand at recess. Thank you.